I want to say how distinctly pleased I am to be able to join you tonight. I'm going to be a little animated, you must forgive me if I am. Maybe I shouldn't make an apology for that, because that's kind of just what it is, right? But I want to recognize at the outset, again, the honorable Minister. I met the principal of the school downstairs, our moderator for this evening, in his distinguished place. And to all of you here assembled, residents of New York, and of course, professional people, and of course, women such as your faces, and I recognize you in your respective stations in life. I want to offer my congratulations to you, and to thank you for continuing to make your contributions to nation building. Now, most times when I turn up, and I say it's my pleasure to receive your invitation, and to greet you, and to interact very closely with you, I ask you to pay attention, in a very respectful way. And from my first utterances, I say, "Pay attention." So stay with me tonight, don't allow me to lose you. If you stay alert for a couple of minutes, we're gonna be okay. If you mess around going with this, you will have wasted your night. I'd like to ask you for permission to remove my hairdress, is that okay? Can I remove my hairdress? Thank you very much. What did I just demonstrate to you? Not complicated, you think you're hard, you're going to miss it there. Respect, bingo. We cannot have a conversation about being behemians. We cannot have a conversation about reclaiming the Bahamas. We cannot have a conversation about the good old days. We cannot have a conversation about crime, unless we understand that fundamental thing, respect. So when we lose ourselves, because we're power-struck, and that has happened to a lot of us, then we totally lose ourselves. The other thing I need to tell you at the outset, is there are some people, if you didn't know, who just do not like you. You figure who they are. God gave you a brain, I'm sure you've used it to get to this stage in your life. Whether you're a teacher, an attorney, a medical doctor, a reporter, whatever your station, pastor, deacon, decaness, police officer, some folks just don't like you. How do I know? Our Lord and Savior, good master, or when if you can't handle this this evening, you'll have to tell me now if you want the excuse, because I talk about our Lord and Savior, good master. I can't help myself, folks.
Amen.
I said the Bahamas, I can't help myself. He was perfect among us. Didn't like him, Doc, Minister, some of them just ain't gonna like you. And you'll never change them, that ain't political, that's just what it is. And when people don't like you, they twist up. There's a lot of noise and they distract you. Now, do I look like a mouth of God's fine for the cut, this'll get a little narrow too. I don't have no marks on me. So you gotta watch what you hear. In the couple of words I just uttered, do I sound like an unintelligent behemian? You really believe I'd stand in a public place and just throw on the towel and say, "Oh my God, I give up, I give up the ghost, I'm depressed"? Does that sound sensible? So you have to understand context. If you ask me, ladies and gentlemen, "How do you feel, Commissioner, having seen that young child who was just shot in the head, and we're told that his brain matter was left in the streets, how do you feel?" What does depressed mean? Low in spirit. Is it making any sense to you? Want to set the stage for you, because I'mma share just a few words. So you have to watch that, or you're going to miss the message, because you're too people-focused, you're too personality-centered, and you're going to miss the message. I'mma say one other thing, and then I'm gonna get right to the heart of what I want to tell you tonight. I'm certainly have a hope that you will talk to me, I really hope. Because if you talk to me, I promise you, we're gonna have a good time tonight. Won't take much of your time, it's late in the evening. We've got some trick folks here, right? Is there something in the Bible, some scripture that says, "Where a few are gathered in my name..." You won't help me with this, it won't help me with this. What you say?
Touching anything in my name.
Absolutely.
He's promised to be in the main.
So now we get off church, what you say? So Minister, I am just okay tonight. I don't want you second-guessing yourself, I don't want you, none of you second-guessing yourself. You are here, you are right where you're supposed to be. And this is just what's been there, have been out there for this time. So now that we've said that, let's have a chat, what do you say?
Amen.
Okay, beautiful. I want to introduce the team to you, and I'm going to ask them to help me. Mr. Dean, just stand and face the audience and tell them who you are, very quickly. Tell them your name, tell them who you are.
I'm Stephen Dean, Superintendent of Police, Director of the National Crime Prevention Office. I'm excited to be a police officer.
Absolutely, and I can attest to that.
I'm Kevin Upstein, Assistant Commissioner.
That even sounds snazzy, right? It's good to have you, have you along, Kelly?
I'm Bruce Thompson, Detective Sergeant Division, also responsible for neighborhood policing.
Wonderful, and I was so pleased, so delighted to see our commanding officer this evening. I feel so safe. Tell them how much trouble you gave me in training. Oh, man. Rest in peace.
I did not, I did nothing to mention that. David Devoe is my name, Superintendent of Police, and I have the office charge in Southern Division. As a great slave, as my squad mate, he joined the Royal Police Force same day, May 11th, 1979. Had a great time, had a good kiss. Coffer, David Pratt, Robbham, National Crime Prevention Service.
And we have two officers here who must speak up quickly for us.
Please call someone 12-6 for us, President of National Crime Prevention Office.
Officer Jamal Ali, please, Commissioner Shugman.
Yes, and tell her that I saw her, so she can't duck me. And I'll introduce her, coming in the door, distinguished lady, at some point she has smiled, she has a beautiful smile. And I promise you, at some point tonight, you'll see that smile. Welcome aboard, it's good to have all of you. I wanted again to be respectful and to be introduced to you. What I'm going to do very quickly, is to give you an overview of what is happening. Mr. Dean, I probably can ask you an interest of time, because I'm just feeling a little bit like I'm making, I wanna move around. And I don't have the little clicker. I'm going to give you an overview at the point, I'll give you what's happening. I'm gonna talk a little bit about what we're doing, about what's happening, very, very briefly. I'm going to turn and say to you, offer an opinion as to what I think you might be able to do to assist all of you here assembled. And then I'm going to ask you about some of your concerns. And then, of course, we've got a demo at the back of the room, and I believe you'd be cheating yourselves if you left tonight, and you did not spend just a few moments to take a brochure or two, and of course, understand some of the things that we brought along to hopefully assist you. Mr. Dean, bring up the slides for me. What's happening in the actual demo? Let's give you, give you a quick, I'm going to move over to the side, not projecting my voice as I speak. For the year-to-date, we've recorded 12 murders. That is disgraceful. That is disgraceful. A place where we call, a place that we say is fun-loving, we're a Christian nation of good people, we can't, we can't explain that to the 12. Last year, we recorded 94 murders, not homicides, murders. And here we are, just ending January of 2011, and we've already recorded 12. I'm gonna come back and talk to that in a little bit. Of the 12, we've solved five. We have the ability to solve all 12 of them. But you know who that depends upon? In the public, every one of us. Because as we speak, would you be surprised if I told you that those people with blood on their hands are living in residences where the family members know exactly what they've done? If they do not have all of the details, they've got a fair idea. You know what's gonna shock you a little bit more, maybe it wouldn't? We lie to ourselves so well, that we turn up at church, and we sing "Hallelujah", praise the Lord, I'm gonna say it, and you get out with me, I'm telling you that. And you're saying it, and my mommy used to say, "If God was like my hand..."
He'd strike you down.
He'd strike you down. You saw your child, the blood on his hand, you've seen him with the gun, and you asked the Commissioner what he's doing about it, "I didn't kill anyone, no one in this room dead." I'm really hoping no one in your family did, your immediate families, I really hope, with all my heart tonight. But you let your conscience guide you. Is this your sister's children, your brother's children? Let's listen carefully to the questions that we should be asking. So we've solved five, we can solve all 12 of them. There are times when we're not able to tell you much about it, of these matters. We make an appeal, and we don't say very much, because these things are going to have to, these matters are gonna have to play in court. And there are days when I tell you, "Minister, I'm anxious to talk, and I just can't", and I go to bed with that on my heart, and I do pray about it. Because it's all in your head, you know, there's a lot that we know we just can't tell you about. I was telling you, Minister, just moments ago while sitting in the car, he asked me about texting, texting. And I told him, texting, BBMing, you name it, I do all the detective stuff on BlackBerry. And just got some interesting information of a suspect. We have technological reach that you would never imagine. We're not dumb and stupid. We have been exposed, but I'm not going to discuss that publicly. Point is, don't second-guess me, you may surprise yourself. The fellow walking through the truckload tonight was surprised when he saw us. He thought it was ghosts, it was police. He would never dream, coming on that truckload, he'd walk into three police officers. And he's probably trying to figure, "How did they know?" Point is, you know, there's due process, and you can't just summarily convict him, nor can you make him disappear just like that. Look at the info at the bottom, male victims, 10, 83% so far, 10. And so of the 10 of them, 83% of the 12 are two female victims. I'll move the slide for Mr. Dean, I'm gonna move very quickly through this. Armed robberies. Now, we're down on the numbers from last year, month to month. So you're noticing we're protecting 73 armed robberies here, as opposed to 87, just for lack of a second thought, as opposed to 87. There's a clear reason for that. We've been doing long work, we did long work last year. And I feel terrible when I hear the office has been criticized, because the kids have turned up and they said, "Here are 351 guns that took out the hands of people on the streets of predominantly Providence. These are people that have the ability to pull the trigger of a gun and take your life." We did not have to murder anyone or to kill anyone, except one. And that was a live fire, just for now, because the gentleman had just shot someone, and it was a live play. And he turned his gun on the officers and they took it. The point is, it played out. But beyond that, I really give credit to our people for bringing in so many weapons, and doing no harm to anyone. So that 73, representing the decrease, is because of the more pointed approach now in targeting. Someone asked if I was fighting terrorists, or whether it's fighting crime, whatever that was. So I didn't use that, I kinda skimmed over that, and I make a cup of coffee and I move on, no biggie. Because I'm not sure if you would leave this room tonight, and confront someone out there with that, I'm not sure that you would do it, I wouldn't do it, if I didn't have that, I wouldn't do that. That wouldn't be smart. All right, and I can tell you that from experience, because I've had an occasion where I've been held for hours at gunpoint, with a double-barrel shotgun to my head, hoping that that trigger wouldn't be pulled, fact, we don't play that out in the newspapers. I had an opportunity to kill the young man that had that gun to my head, I didn't want to do that, Minister. We don't talk about these things, and I'm looking to be no star of publicity. The point is, I had to use the brain that God gave me, thank God for the cellular phone. You know there's a way that you can use a phone and leave the line open? I played a little head game, I left the phone line open. I had a smile detector on the phone, listening, I tried to talk him to where I was. I talked around it sufficient that I got to a point where there was lighting, and you I was gonna get out of my life. I saw an opportunity, I took it, shots rang out, we didn't mean to kill him, he's still alive. He says today he's my friend. And he went to court and he beat the rap. So here we are. Move on for me, please, Mr. Dean, quickly. Firearms and ammunition seized. We've taken 32 guns off the streets already for the year-to-date, that's January, 1 to now. I want you to let that hit you. We do have manufactured guns in the Bahamas, guns that were legal in the Bahamas. And here we are, telling you 32, we took away 34 last year, but already for this year, 32. I brought along a picture, or two on the phone, and show you how big these guns are, big, and some of the guns that we have. But of course, we will match, we will match, trust me, I tell you that. Newport, Providence, and the southern Bahamas, we've picked up 30 of the weapons, and in Grand Mahama, just two. So again, predominantly, that in Providence, most of those guns were right there now, so move on from this game. Sexual offenses, we raised up by two already for the year. We've only solved four of them. Not too happy with that 40%, but we're working at it, working at it. Still have a lot of work to do around the DNA, the person is masked, and you're not sure who it is, it's not always that easy. And then two, there's some other issues that interfere with the process, where folks will report, but crime might not allow them to tell you as much as they can. Again, we cannot play that out in the public, we have to respect, respect persons. Can we move on, Mr. Dean? Business and technology, we get sometimes questions from people, saying, "Well, you know, why do you go after these hard, tough crimes, the pre-collars stuff? And you wanna arrest those people that are stealing from business institutions, we go after them." Already for the year, 32, 40 matters, 26 last year, people are coming forward and reporting, and we're working at it. Mr. Dean? Okay, and what are we doing about it? First thing I want to say though is, I wanna talk for just a few moments about who is committing the crimes, who are these people? I don't want you to fool yourself, you need to get off it. Wake up, pinch yourself, do the reality check. Let me say it again. The people committing crimes in the Bahamas predominantly are our children. They are behemians. Stop trying to patch yourself and make yourself feel good about it. The people that break into your house and steal are behemians. Someone's son, predominantly the men, living somewhere in this community, some in the Bahamas that will turn up at your house, look for an opportunity, and break and take your stuff in itself. And will steal your car, or will harm you if you turn up while they're doing it, that's reality. They live among us, they're not strangers, they don't drop out of the sky. They don't commit crime and go off to the shorelines and swim away from the Bahamas. They return home, whatsoever, there are several places where it happens to be, and people benefit from those proceeds. Your flat-screen television, that you paid 800 odd dollars for, it's probably sold for 100 bucks, if it's a tough day. It'd be cheaper, depends on how the person bargains. Market is there, we point again to our people that purchase. The person with the 100 bucks is gainfully employed, if not gainfully employed, illegally employed, and laundering, that stuff, meaning that you have a question, sets an illegal operation, says to the people, "Are there many crimes?", you bring it to me, I'll manage this for you. Take 100 dollars, tell you what else I'm looking for. Like this 42 inch, but can you give me like a 54? See with a 54, that fellow's on the prowl looking for 54. That's real. And here's this guy that set up shop illegally, that claimed to have all of these rights in the Bahamas, that continues to turn the products. And he's selling it to people that go home and benefit from it. And don't see anything wrong with that, so the market is here. On one or two televisions, ladies and gentlemen, answer them, these are our children. Do we see from time to time other nationalities? We might see an American, some other person from the region, if you pick your country and the region, you might find a person. You see some folks, maybe of Haitian origin, parentage, Jamaicans. But you take your pick. But the majority of these crimes are committed by behemians. I just wanna say it for effect, because you may be looking in the wrong direction. The other thing about it is, the majority of these crimes, particularly the serious crimes, are committed by adults. So if you're in a school system, you have to be careful how you point fingers at your young people. I think young people get a little fed up with that. That you continue to point your finger at them and say, "These are youngsters, these are youngsters, and these are gang, gang". Well, the stats that we have, the investigations that we can tap, don't not point us to that. We didn't have a gang involved, we had a bad boy who was using drugs, has a gun, and he murdered someone, because he thinks it's a bad guy, and he believes he can get away with it. The facts are there to show. Look at the facts, and what the facts tell you. And it points us right back to some neighborhood where his folks lives, his family members and friends. So what are we doing about it? Every single day, right now as we speak, and all hours of the night, officers go out and they look for suspects. So Mr. Dean, let's roll a couple of them. We had a suspect here riding a motorcycle, he saw the police, he panicked, had his dope on his arm, riding along. He fell down, the dope fell, we got him, we got the bike, we got the dope. This is another young man. And a lot of them, you know, you sometimes think that all of them are just rough and tough-looking, some of them look pretty cool. And some look from really nice homes too. Here's a shotgun under bed, if you're looking carefully, you'll see it just here, it's a sawed-off shotgun. See some ammunition there, the jacket, wore it for me. One dwell on that, that you'll see on the picture there. These folks walked in, into a place where everybody was assembled and just casually walked through, with 41 pounds of cocaine, no biggie. Here, everybody said hi, and a young, alert officer thought, "Wait a minute, something doesn't look right here. Let's see what you got in the bag", there we go. So we got an aircraft there, pretty good-looking aircraft, we got a vehicle, and we go after these things. We go to court and we say, "We're confiscating it", and who knows, we might be able to, at the end of the day, for all those weapons, to put a police sign on it, and do something legitimate with it. So hopefully, the country get a benefit from some of these things. Look at this weapon, and the clip. Person pulls the trigger on this and opens fire on you, you're going to be in a bit of trouble. And that's a firearm arrest, found under the driver's seat. There's a female, going to the airport, wanted dope, 2.84 pounds of cocaine. You could question her from now until Christmas, she don't know where she got it from, she don't know what it is, she has a lapse of memory, you could forget that, you're talking to the wall. Okay, so you charge her, and the point is, she's moving stuff in a retail fashion for someone. She is known by people in the community, because she's from a family. But she is in a certain cultural mold that restricts her, she doesn't think the way that you and I think. Not being mean to understand what reality is. Do you realize, I wanna tell you, that there are people who wake up in the mornings, they're not washing their face, they're not brushing their teeth, they're not taking a bath, and it's just another day. And get to bed a little late, maybe that night, and we play that same scenario the next day. That's hard to believe, right? They don't operate like you and I. And you find it hard to believe. They just don't operate like you and I. Now, we used to live in burnt town, unless you think I'm being mean to someone. It was a little wooden house, six of us, mom and dad. And we used to, as we said, tote water from the pump, or we washed our faces, did the best to brush our teeth, and where we didn't have the toothbrush, we used our fingers, fact. And mommy used to say, "Cleanliness is next to grandiness", wonderful things that you never forget. And she said, "Bent boy, you know sin, bent nasty, you got a problem with that." So the little kids, we got on our knees, and we, you saw them, little black, and he, little black marks on your knees, make you bend down, linen jacks and scrubbing, and you get little black legs, if you live bright like me, you're looking a little ducky. They said, "If you live bright, you'll be short very quick." So I was always a little fella to the corner, bent down, the fellow just laughed, I had to sort myself out pretty quickly. So don't mix the corners up in there, the point is, it's where you come from and how that head is working. 75 yard, and we go to these places, you'll be amazed at some of the places that we go to. And here you have, this is retail dope. This is a business, it's little foil wrappers with cocaine and money, just leave it so you can see. And we show you here, 19 foil wrappers, suspected, actually in this case marijuana, 61 dollars in cash, it's always small bills, dollar, dollar, five dollar, dollar. A clear bag here with marijuana, 21 grams, so there's still some that we're processing. Another plastic bag with 180 cash. Now, we talk about murder, you have to understand how this works. See, this 180 dollars cash in plastic bag, and you have this other capture, this money does not belong to this person who's retailing. Now, I hope you understand that. This person is running a business as a retailer, and this money does not belong to him. So if the girlfriend or someone moved some of this money, and this don't add up to some things here, and you do that more than once, you may turn up dead. It's a business, folks. And we know people who said, "Don't ask me to give him a break, he stole from me. Nobody steals from me." Doesn't even sound like a behemian, hey? I wonder what a behemian sounds like? And then someone dies. And our general public refuses sometimes to believe it's that complicated. It's the way we think. I'm leading to something, I said to you, "Don't allow me to lose you, please." Here we see some more little wrappers, and you got some more money, we started to spread the money out so you can see it. Again, you look at, the house on the side, the back of the house, picture to the right. We obliterated faces, we didn't wanna show faces. Again, you see qualification on bars, because what they do is, they try to keep us out. Lots of people try to keep us out. They know you're gonna come, they know that you're gonna call us and say, "There's something wrong about this house", so they qualify the house. So the point is, you get to the house, the stuff is flushed down the toilet, and they get rid of it. And you get this, "You know what you're stressing me about, chief? You know, why you guys are looking for some real crime?" Here is some exhibit, I don't want to spend too much time on it, but we were amazed at our, oh, I'm sorry, amazed that our people is able to find that stuff, because you would not have found it. You search and you would not have found it, they ingenious the way they do business. See what's going on here now? The folks will ask me, "If I'm fighting terrorists, that's bulletproof vest, why do criminals have a bulletproof vest?" Not hard to figure that out, means that I'ma fight you. I'm not prepared to run anymore, and I'm gonna put that on, as when I commit my crime, if I come upon you, the average citizen, as far as I'm concerned, that's easy, I'm a bad boy. And if I come across the cops, I'm gonna take my chances. That's reality. I wanna just make a point here, I'm gonna try to be careful. This is what we refer to as a clothes hanger, can you see? This would be that little portion of the, of the little curvature that you hide. They straighten it out, and this would be the back end, you see that? And on the end of the baggie is the cocaine, and that was in a place where you would never find it, never find it. I don't wanna talk about that, because this is a lot of cases, just leave it there. Hollow points, bad stuff. You get hit with these things, they're gonna mess up all this. In his other life, Doc will tell you, it's tough. This house here, we're gonna have to do some things about this. Some people may recognize it, I don't point too much to it, but if you look at the qualification of the bars, the whole idea is to keep us out, they go to these places, it takes you a while to get in, and you look outside, you see the amount of junk and filth, you could have a gun-dope hidden anywhere. It doesn't just say, "See me here", you have to look for it. I'm saying you gotta give some credit, these kids were card, our people. These are adults, and they wanted suspects, and so I left their faces up. Henry Alexander Holmes, it is Henry Wallace, has been committing crime for a long time. Not sure that he will ever change. Some of you may know him, Sean Marco Fox. On the hidden day, you look at Sean, and if he's mind-managed, you would not suspect he's doing anything wrong. He's a bad boy. Summer of the month, 18 and a half kilos of cocaine, over 50 pounds of marijuana, four firearms. This is just one segment of force, we got much more than that. This is drug enforcement, 54 sorted ammunitions, one aircraft, 22 persons charged, two being looked for at the moment, 306 dollars seized, one bulletproof vest, that was just a little sign of the drug enforcement. And I just wanted to give a sample of cash, right here, and that's quite a bit of dope. Mr. Dean, this, do you see these stacks of money? Yeah, that says real stacks. I did not bring along some of the mazes that we can show you, but we look at it sometimes, and we go, "Wow, that's a lot of money." I come across your uncle, he's gonna say, "Chief, can I look at it?", and I say, "Yeah, you can look at it, don't touch it." So, you know, I have had the experience of looking at, say, 2.5 million dollars, just like that, thinking, "Wow, 2.5", and it's just in the back front of a car. Actually, on one occasion, we came upon a stash like that, it was almost 3 mil, and the gentleman said he didn't know how to gun his car. I said, "Will you pick up for me please?", and he says, "I do not know how to gun there, never saw it before." So I said, "You wanted to?", he said, "No, I want that in my yacht." So Minister went to the public treasury, went to confiscated assets fund, which law allows for? Because you can't just leave it in the open, get a bet and all that stuff, right? Gives you an indication of some of the weapons that we have recovered, just giving you samples of weapons. This, let me help out here, this is, looks to me, generally like a 357. If you look at this one, it has a long clip on it, and this looks to me like a Technik. Now, most of these weapons we've used, I've used, usually in a Technik, you can have a lot of firepower. Here's another, high-powered, almost has a look, generally, of a leg. Here's another high-powered, uh, almost has a look gentleman of the AK, you have a banana clip in here, we call it an AK forty-seven. Uh, that's another high-tech. Um, and if you look at the foliage, you see the weapon in, in bushes. So, in- interesting stuff that we come across. And last year, again, we gained three hundred and fifty-one recovered. Again, again, we gained, things so far for this year, stacking up. Please, please move on from me. Okay, so I want to just run quickly through the fact that, yeah, we do have some issues, there's some things happening. Is it all a gloom and gloom? No. Uh, are we going to be okay? Yes, I think we are. You can't be fake on it. We didn't just get here, it took us a long time to get to where we are. We're starting to see signs now to tell us, uh, it will get better. If I didn't believe that, I wouldn't say. And there are lights now when our people call me, they say, couldn't beg, unarrested, couldn't beg to find a guy on the streets. Because now they understand that there's a real one for one. If you look into about the streets, you're going to get arrested. Now, I do have some people pushing back and saying, uh, don't like seeing you with your guns, you don't know why you're in our neighborhoods, you're harassing people. We hear some of that, any democracy, that's to be allowed for. But, um, we have a mandatory law to protect you, and that is what we are going to continue to do. We're not going to make any apologies for that. So I say again what I've always said, I've asked the officers to be firm, fair, professional in their dealings. Continue to repeat that, firm, fair, professional. But I want it to be resolute, relentless in their pursuit. For difficult offenders, people that commit crimes, people that own weapons, that sell dope, and that make noise around us at night. It's against the law and they're going to go after it. What can you do very quickly to help? Time is slipping and I'm going to move now and wrap this up for you, because I want to get some questions. I'm not going to give you anything philosophical, but some very basic things, and I'll, I'll make the point to prove it. If you see a crime, call it in. If you see a crime, call it in. A lady was driving the street just, uh, a few moments, mornings ago. She turned the corner and there was a young man walking across the street in one of our neighborhoods, right in the south of the city of all. I couldn't do anything about it because she didn't give me much to go on. She slowed up to give him a chance to cross the street. Um, he turned and she saw this big gun in his waist. What did she do? What's your guess? Drive away, absolutely nothing. She did absolutely nothing. She called no one, she did absolutely nothing. She just looked at the man, man, guess he got a gun, big gun, and all she went to work. She's a good person. Later that day, having a little conversation, she heard in the news report that someone had been shot. I said, I see one fellow on car this morning, you know? And they engaged him, yeah, and she got him to explain what she saw. And they thought, what did you do? And she said, um, I didn't really think about it like that. Don't fall into that trap. A young man rang me just before I came to see you tonight. And he sounded a little, one, I says, slow down, take a deep breath, I'm listening, what's, what's going on? Something as simple as this. I just saw a jitney, he said, hit a man's car and refused to stop. I'm following the jitney. The jitney doesn't order on to him, I says, keep talking. Slow down, you doing alright? I am deputize you now, so slow down for me, got gas in the car, yes sir. I says, stay about a car behind, and you just keep that jitney inside for me, can you see the number? I then touched the white, I said, give me the next phone. So I'm multitasking, I dial the police control room, and I says, stay on the line with me, you still there? Told himself, I swear to you. And my, my family's getting excited, they, they kind of like, police in training, you know? I'm making light of it, but this is real. So, and I have a little quarter here, and he's like, you know, paying attention. So I've got this young person on the phone talking to me, I've got the police control room. And I'm saying, okay, tell me where you are, what direction are you going? And I'm talking back and forth. What happened was after the jitney hit the man and he took off, the gentleman tried to pursue him. Recognized that he wasn't having success, the young man in the car that was hit turned off and went to the police station. This person calling saw the trajectory and knew, okay, that person's heading to a particular police station, so to pick that up, one plus one, two. And is now talking, I says, all you do for me is I will purchase you some gas tomorrow, I will fill your car up. You stay away from it, don't alert the person that you're into them, and you talk to me. That's just twenty-one by seven, folks. He says, okay, I see the police car. I said, right, does the police car see the jitney? Yes, sir. He's pulling them open now. I said, okay, you pull to the side, stay back for me now, don't get involved, I don't want them to see you. I don't want you to be a target. And of course, police turn them around, took jitney and the gentleman, back to the police station. The, the person passed the police, this is good detective, I can recruit this guy. Passed the police, he says, yes, I see the car, I see the jitney. They got him. I says, okay, now you're my independent witness. I will not hold your name. And then rang the station and said, tell the jitney that there's an independent witness that saw what happened. And he need to come clean. He said, I confess. Did I call anyone's name? Does that have anything to do with trusting a police officer? Not really. I'm not going to summon that person to go to court. I have no further interest in that, except I will do a good deed and I'm going to probably give that fellow a full tank of gas. Got to give something back with the deed. See what I'm saying? And that fellow may call me again. Which is said, fundamental things. So, I said, we're intelligent people, you see a crime, call it in. I wanted to give you the real example, very simple, but call it in. You have a suspicion, follow your instincts. Breakers that come to your residence to break, never ever just show up and break. There are times when there are opportunities, it's crimes of opportunity. You get careless, you pull in, you do something real interesting. You leave your car, engine running, you hop out, good looking car, and you walk up and tipsy-tipsy, a little by, and you go to the house. And the fellow's just happened to be on the prowl, and just happened to come upon an opportunity, knows what's going to happen. By the time you're in the tip, tip, back inside, you're taking the, you're got a Alzheimer's, because you're sure you backed the car, it ain't there no more. And then you say, but I do that every day. That's precisely my point. You do it every day. Preach your habit, people prey on that. So you have the opportunities, but most times, persons that are going to commit crimes will case your property, pass your nee- pass your neighborhood, look around, and they look, look for soft targets. They will see two, three houses, look at them and, and determine which one is more inviting. There's a little pocket in the yard, yap, yap, yap. As simp- as simple as that means saying, they ignore the yard, I swear to you. You could pick any other dog, but I'm talking with them, they're roughly a pocket, rain wrapped them, sun dried them, they don't get sick dog. I have a little, um, pally green, I stayed to the wrap of this dog, please, please, I'll take much. I'll take much. That's why you have to fool more than me. I love him to death, he sleeps in the house, he's a part of the family, he's a, he's a shepherd, he's a very good dog, very intelligent. Acts like human being, I have no issues, I didn't think this is a behemoth, I have a comfort, I tell you, I come to that. And, um, I have this wonderful routine before I leave my house, which is remember now, I am a big target. You, some of you may not recognize that. Uh, anyone that is angry has a reason to be angry with me, I took the money, I took the plane, you've earned it. See, the young policeman did it, but as far as he said, I'm boss and I authorized it, so everyone got a problem with me in slave, believe me when I tell you, I did it in the bad world, on the world. So, I have my routine, but he, he's up early, I am up early, and, uh, he scouts the yard, he runs around, does his little looking around. If there's a cat in the yard, he's saying, yap, yap, yap. I'm armed all the time, and so we pay attention, so you know what I'm saying, I'm not cats. Those dogs are beautiful. I, I'm telling you. Trust me, if you say you ain't got much money to buy, get yourself a little dog, but get one that yaps. Don't get a dog that's smiling, riding, staring at everybody. That doesn't have to fight, just yap, it's yap, alright? Because bad boys don't want attention. And if their dog start yapping, they say, you know, crazy dog, or you hear the dog yap, mean something to a stone, you can almost patch your bottom dog. If you ignore that, you give it a dare to someone's house, it's going to be broken in, I promise you. Don't ignore it, look out. Look out, you'll be surprised at what you see. Alright, and so they look for the target that's soft. So we say, it doesn't just happen. If you have a suspicion, follow your instincts. Don't turn around and say, boy, you know, I saw this funny looking fellow through the corner a few years ago, something told me I should have called the police, but it's too late now. The damage is done. Very basic things. You'll be amazed at how you know this stuff, you'll live in the light. Who's who on air? No disrespect to you. And you go, yeah, yeah, that wasn't philosophically enough for me. It's nothing grand, very basic stuff. Practice safe routines, at home, lock doors. We amazed at the amount of times, Mr. Dean will tell you, where people will tell us, I normally locked the door, but I just, you know, listen, no, I thought I'd come back and, I was going to put the ghost ahead, come back and lock the door. Bad timing, someone just came into the house, she's got robbed, or someone got raped. Locked the door, you, you, they have to take, make an effort to get in, and then you can call nine-one-one and say, yes, he's on my front door. Now, unless this fellow's really crazy and local, and you say out of harm's way, but you make the land, he probably run. There's some issues like that. Call someone. If you say you call the police and then a lot, you call somebody else. So at home, at work, and during your travel to work, pay attention.